First I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Greatly to be here, it's honored to be your mayor and council. I just want to thank you all for coming, it means so much to us to be here. We just want tonight to be a special night for all those who had positive nights for our town. And I just wanted to say from bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you very, very much. What we want to do is we're going to introduce our three big six, present our colors, ladies and gentlemen. Then Brother Eddie's going to read some of the work of our education. So please stand.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, up. Cross the color. Attention, salute, pledge.
I will do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, about, face, forward march.
Lord, we thank you for this night, for the new beginnings in our city. We thank you, Lord, for this man who fears you and who will do what is right. Thank you, Lord, for those who join him on the city council, who also, Lord, will seek to make right decisions for this city and will seek to do what is good and right in your eyes. Lord, we pray for this community, we ask your blessings upon this community, and not only upon our community, Lord, but also upon our country. And, Lord, upon our new mayor. In the city council, we ask your blessings upon them. We ask, Lord, that you give them the wisdom that they need to guide our city in the right way. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you all. That's what it's all about, appreciate the service of our town. This time I also want to introduce the driving circular judge of twenty business of the court, John, Judge John Benson. John Benson was our attorney twenty years ago when I was on the council and helped guide us through meaningful things to his dear, dear friends. So freely introduce him and he's going to do our office this time.
I, Wade Williams, solemnly swear, that I am eligible for the office of mayor. I am eligible for the office. Execute the duties of saying. According to the best of my ability. That I will support the constitutions and will obey the laws of the United States of America and of the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. Observe the provisions and ordinances of the city of Hamilton. Will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor. Will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor. Big Ingram. Solemnly swear that I am eligible of the office of council member. And will execute the duties of saying according to the best of my ability. And I will support the constitutions and will obey the laws of the United States of America and of the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. Will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member. Francis Knight. If you would raise your right hand. I, Francis Knight, solemnly swear that I am eligible for the office of council member and will execute the duties of saying according to the best of my ability. And that I will support the constitutions and will obey the laws of the United States of America and of the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member. Lynn Mitchell. I, Lynn Mitchell, solemnly swear that I am eligible for the office of council member. And will execute the duties of saying according to the best of my ability. And that I will support the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member. Tim Hawkins. I, Tim Hawkins, solemnly swear that I am eligible for the office of council member. And will execute the duties of saying according to the best of my ability. And that I will support the constitutions and will obey the laws of the United States of America and the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. Will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member. Tammy Lewis Williams. I, Tammy Lewis Williams. We're not getting married. I, Tammy Lewis Williams, swear that I am eligible for the office of council member. And will execute the duties of saying according to the best of my ability. And that I will support the constitutions and the laws of the United States of America and of the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
This call meeting is ordered. The order is on the recommendation of Third Mitchel last minute. Have a motion to approve the minutes of last. Also, any discussion? Recommendation to approve the council payable bills. Have a motion to approve the bills. Any discussion? We went over this afternoon, we practiced it on the issue. And before each meetings, the council members, we will look over all the deals before we pay. Recommendation to approve resolution number two thousand twelve dash eleven. That's filed with the mayor's folks in the city of Hamilton. Do I have a recommendation for the thing? Have a motion to approve Francis's. Have a motion. He read. Have a second. Is there any discussion? What we did is let the council talk about this among the sales. They announced they wanted Francis to be our mayor's folks. She's graciously said so she wants to. This is something the council wanted to do, and I agree with them. I'll be at it. Quit, did we go? Okay, the next on, it's recommendation to change the time of council meetings from five thirty to six on the first and third Monday. We've been meeting on first and third Monday to five thirty, but we're going to start meeting on the first and third Monday at six o'clock instead of that. Because it's harder to see on the Greg and so others to meet here at five thirty. So we'll meet the same Monday, first and third Monday, but just time it is. Be six o'clock. Does that need a motion to approve? All in favor? Number six is the recommendation to approve resolution number two thousand twelve dash eleven five dash two, appoint Jan Williams as city clerk for countercooperative play. Have a motion to appoint Jan as your city clerk. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I think Dan has been twenty two times that's recommended.
He's humbled by this occasion. I, Jan Williams, do solemnly swear that I am eligible for the office of clerk. And will execute the duties of saying according to the best of my ability. And that I will support the constitutions and the laws of the United States of America and the state of Alabama. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Hamilton. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of clerk.
This time I'd like to appoint Ronnie DeCree as chief of police in the county. Eleven nineteen twelve, which will be two weeks from today. Also like to have a recommendation, city chief of police salary forty seven thousand dollars with an increase of a thousand dollars after twelve months. It'll be forty seven thousand the first year, forty eight thousand start the second year. Have a motion to approve the recommendation. I'll make a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Also like to appoint Barry Winkler as chief of fire at his current by the county. Like a recommendation that all other employees of the city of Hamilton shall continue in their respective duties temporary pending such time as the council shall make permanent notice. Have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Also a recommendation that we tend to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash eleven five three to ratify the use of present depositories for the city funds until such time as the mayor and council shall permanently designate these certain depositories. Otherwise it's going to be the same bank until the time is changed. With a motion to approve that. Have a second. Second. Any discussion?
I have a statement from this issue due to our family for sitting on the board.
Any discussion? All in favor? Ten years. I, number eleven, the recommendation to an ordinance two thousand twelve dash three to place secretarial authority from Pennington Sheriff and Scotty Sancho and have the following persons take signed checks at the bank. Lord Williams, mayor, Jan Williams, city clerk, and Francis Knight. Have a motion to approve that recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor? Number twelve, recommendation to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash eleven dash five four for a point to Northwest Alabama Gas History Board. Do I have a recommendation? Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Recommendation to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash eleven dash five dash five for the county council as the city's council. Have a motion to approve that. Have a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Number fourteen, the recommendation to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash eleven five six to reappoint Wyatt Howe as municipal judge for a two-year term in this current way. Have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? I think we need to swear any judge how. Do you have a calling? Just maybe we can swear he is not.
I, Ralph Wyatt Howe, do solemnly swear as the case, that I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the constitution of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue a resident thereon.
As long as I so continue a resident thereon.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office of municipal judge upon which I'm about to enter. Best of my ability. So help me God.
Okay, this is the recommendation to two thousand three thousand twelve dash seven, dash five, dash seven, to reappoint Scott Humphries, mayor of council. And see possibly. Have a motion to reappoint Scott Humphries, mayor of council. All in favor? Have a second? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
All of our folks, what we're going to do now is have a scheduled public hearing November fifth, two thousand twelve, to hear public comments regarding the fall defensive requests for alcohol licenses. Persons will be discounted backlist, not in case for retail beer, all prices on them. License for retail table wine, all prices on the license. This is Paige's. They spent all the licenses with the city, with the agency, with the fire department, the police department, and the state. This is just a year to say there's any comments on that particular business. Next will be, uh... Mr. Wade, do you know? After we used to go, before we go to the next one? All right, it will be recommendation to approve resolution number two thousand twelve dash eleven dash five eight, as follows. Whereas Herman Abel's Harrison taking discount tobacco located thirteen thirty Baxter Avenue West. Hamilton Alabama has applied for legal license for the sale of O five O retail beer, all prices on them. No seven O retail table wine, all prices on them. Do you have a motion to approve that? Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Next will be Moore Superstore for retail beer, all prices on them, table wine, all prices on them. This is a store of town. Is that right? Okay, Duden Creek, okay, okay. Best one, Duden Creek. Here now is where this particular business is written. Comments on this one, Lord? Only the recommendation to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash eleven dash five dash nine, as follows, this is Moore Superstore located fifty four seventy six Military Street, Hamilton, Alabama. Has applied for legal license for sale of O five O retail beer and O seven O retail table wine. Whereas Moore Superstore is now, all requirements set forth in ordinance will issue of such licenses. They have to go through a lot of background checks, they have to go through the ABC. Fire department has to do inspection, the police department. All of the requirements to get this. So is there a motion to approve this resolution? Any second? All in favor? All in favor of this? The next one is Moore's Junior Store for retail beer, all prices on them. Retail table wine, this is a store of town. That's the same, they've met all requirements.
It's the same thing, all requirements made. Located at 239 Military Street in Southampton. Has applied to liquid license for O five O retail beer, no seven O table wine, all. Whereas Moore's C stores has met all requirements set forth in the ordinance for the issuance of such license. Is there a motion to approve this? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Fourth is Lastanza Restaurant for retail restaurant, retail liquor. This is, uh... Signs of restaurant located at 1465 Bexar Avenue West, Hampton, Alabama. Has applied for liquid license for sale, O two restaurant, retail liquor. And it's met all requirements set forth in ordinance of issuance of such license. Says now there, beer resolved by the City Council of Hampton, Alabama. City grants its consent and approval for such issuance of such license except for the laws and regulations that govern the license. Is there any...
Yes, sir, I'm Pastor Blair of Praise Assembly of God, which is three doors down. I would ask that the council consider the closeness to the church in this situation. And restaurants serve great food, and but we'd rather not see liquor licensed that close to the church and with the children getting out on Sundays and so forth.
Is that all that's been here?
Yes.
Would you mind addressing that if you don't mind about that? Is there concern?
Um, well, we're not gonna, um... I'm gonna say, we're just gonna start to like, you know, serve what they, you know, when I can serve on Sundays or stuff like that. We're gonna be precaution, we're not gonna have a bar, nothing like that. Still gonna be a family restaurant. We're not, you know, we're not gonna have any bar and eat, you know, loud stuff, nothing like that.
It's not gonna be served, I'm saying.
No, no. It's still gonna be, I've, you know, I've been here for fifteen years and, you know, this town has been my town too. And I just, you know, I still want it to be a family restaurant and I still want everybody to come and eat, you know.
So the restaurant is going to sell takeout and not serve at the table? In other words, are they gonna serve our drinks at the table?
We're gonna serve the drinks at the table and everybody who comes and wanna have a drink, have a meal to be able to have a drink. We're not gonna have like, you know, somebody will come and have a drink or something like that, won't be like that. And not gonna, and not gonna be a carry on, you know, be or nothing like that. We can't do that. You have to, you have to drink it there, you know, and then you have to finish there. You can't take it home with you.
Scott, you ready? The requirement stayed with the ABC, with the city, with the police and body stations. So it's really put now based on...
And alcohol licenses review committee, concerns about closeness of the church.
Oh, form of order, we can't hear you back here. I mean, I don't mean that to be mean, but I'm...
Y'all please speak up so we can hear.
I'm sorry, I just said that the alcoholic license review committee reviewed the application and they passed off on it saying that they met all the requirements of the ordinance here at the church was a consideration that is outside of the two hundred feet zone they set up to be an absolute prohibition. There's a consideration with council, but Angela spoke as well. She's met all the requirements and it is on all premises. It's like alcohol every day is from the premises outside, so... It's a concern and I'm just gonna make myself.
And also, so obviously a rush out of food to...
Right.
Every...
They have, they're probably... Restaurants are...
Right. And you will not serve to anyone, am I right? You will not serve to anyone just outright. They will have to be consuming food in your restaurant.
Yes.
This is just something the city... It's been, it's also something we're not being used to. You know, it's just... CEO of the weapon is supporting it and from time to time, it's just gonna be... Things are just changing. I know that, you know, there's gonna be some opposition sometimes, but it's hard to deny a license just because of that. I understand the feeling completely.
Well, the only thing I would add, if I'm permitted to speak, is that when you use a two hundred foot and I realize that's the law, I've read, I've read the law. But the parking lot's two hundred feet, so anything outside the parking lot wouldn't be able to protest or to say they'd rather not have it there. And we do at the church have activities a lot of times other than Sundays. And the best I remember, someone who drank two or three beers is considered legally drunk. If they get caught and they go down the street and hit a child by our church, then we're all in trouble. I realize it's the law of the land and I'm not arguing. But I understand the vote of the county. But I just want to say, we protest the idea of liquor being that close.
That recommendation for this? Any discussion? All in favor? Next on it is the recommendation to advertise for beer for the city of Hamilton. Engineering qualifications for downtown revitalization project. This is something we're all looking forward to. We're saying to get engineering qualifications, get it all approved. Hopefully sometime in the early spring. The city construction starting on this project. And hopefully have it done by October, September, October. So by the time we have the next fall, next September, we can play the ceremony. But this is the first step in getting this done. We have a motion to approve this. That's second. Any other discussion?
Suggestive that we take a pause on the... There about...
I think it's about six minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor of that? Thing we have next is public announcements, you know, tomorrow's election day all across the nation, also here in Marion County. And you know that the city vote over at the rec center and center construction where they tore down the front part of the building. The county has been tore down the bridge. So you won't be able to go in the front door, but you can go into the indoors. So remember that tomorrow when you go vote, there'll be two indoors will be open. Construction is prohibited just from opening the front door because it's loaded up. It's still under construction. Also, the Marion Council is attending orientation conference for elected officials next Wednesday. Then Birmingham, who will be on a trip to renew the elected officials' orientation. This coming Wednesday, two days from now, the committee will have a grand... I think at eight forty-five, really, eight forty-five. So the welcome comes after. We share new stories beginning here, so we'll support them. Also, support our local businesses, our home local businesses. Don't forget these folks. The grand, the grand opening will be for this, this coming Wednesday. If this is opening, their grand opening is... I don't think it's gonna be Wednesday, but it may be Friday. They're already opening.
And Dollar Tree is...
Dollar Tree is under construction. But once again, I'll thank y'all for being here tonight. After we get through our adjournments, there's snacks out there, drinks, ointments, cupcakes, and things like that. We want to thank y'all for being here. I want to thank the council. We've got a beautiful council, I tell you, I'm proud of, I'm proud to be a part of. We want to be the best mayor council that we could possibly be. I mean, that's brought my heart... Anybody has a thing to say, they can say it before we adjourn?
Need your prayers and support and I hope this man will be back at our next regular meeting. So if you're interested in your city, that's very important. Appreciate it. If you need us, call us.
He wants to be the person on the microphone to adjourn, I know he came away with that.
I'll like it.
Hardwood chair, that's me.